Good evening, everyone. This is the planning board, no, Board of Selectmen meeting. It's all right. Things happen. Today is December 5th, 2024 at 6:05. And this meeting is being recorded and broadcast via our local cable access channel, WCAT, Zoom, Facebook, and YouTube. If you, if anyone in the audience is recording, please let us know. When you, also when you talk on this meeting, please state, state your name. And if you're a resident or you're representing a board. Besides that, I think we're going to get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So at first, we have a tax classification public hearing?
Yes.
There's something you need to read, or Rich needs to read. It's in your binder.
Well, it's just the top part, right?
Do you have it to read?
Is it the same?
It says right here, right?
Okay.
On this one?
Yeah.
Okay. In accordance with MGL Chapter 40, Section 56, the Board of Selectmen will hold a tax classification hearing. The Board of Selectmen will meet with the Board of Assessors to hold a public hearing to consider the tax allocation options available to the town under property tax classification. The Board will determine whether to have a single or a split tax rate and whether to adopt an open space discount, a residential exemption, and small commercial exemption. Written or oral comments from the public will be accepted. This was originally posted November 12th, 2024. Good? General?
Hello, Board.
Hello.
Board of Assessors, good to have you here. We are going to be presenting on the tax classification hearing. I just want to say that was prepared by the Board. I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Deborah Hardy. I have Chairman Donald Mikowski with us. Jack Feeney is not able to be with us today. I also want to recognize our assessing team that we work with. We work with Diane Bishop. She's a consultant and Bishop Associates who does the reevaluation and valuation of the properties in Warren. And I also like to recognize our clerk, Gary Fitzgerald, here with us today. Can you tell me next? Okay, we have already read that.
Yeah.
So the following information that we're going to share is for illustrative purposes only. The purpose of this hearing is for the Board to, to receive the information from us in order to decide on the factor to establish the allocation of the tax levy. This meeting does not determine what the actual tax rate will be. No tax rate has been approved for FY 2025 as of yet. The final tax rate can change slightly when submitting to DOR. Excess levy figures will change slightly due to rounding. As it states, the Board of Selectmen Tax Classification Decision, the Board of Selectmen will vote to determine if the town of Warren will have a single tax rate or a split tax rate. The Board of Selectmen may vote to adopt a residential exemption or a small commercial exemption. So this is the fiscal year 2025 tax rate calculations. So our levy for, in 2024, was $9,729,953, which brought about a tax rate of $15.07. Our levy growth, we had 2,046,339. And then we added to our new growth in tax dollars of 89,410. We had an amended FY growth of 123,615, which brought our levy without the exclusion, we could have used $10,189,317. We did have a levy limit. Outside the limit, these are our debt exclusions, which brought it to $32,887, which brought our debt exclusion to $10,222,204. But the town has been fiscally responsible, and we are using a lower levy this year. So based on that, we have a proposed levy that the town is proposing for $8,559,361.55. That levy that we're proposing to use is less than the limit, and that would bring our tax rate, if with a residential factor of 1, to $14.81. If we decided to do 99%, we would be looking at a tax rate of $14.69. But for commercial, industrial, and personal property, their tax rate for the town would go up to $15.55. And then it goes up with the maximum if we would choose to do a split rate. At 1.5%, the residential factor would go to $13.70, where the commercial, industrial, and personal property would go to $22.21. That, at the maximum, at one point, we would, five, we would see a single-family tax bill would go down to $322, but the maximum shift would increase for the commercial and industrial by $1,892. Do we have any questions on that?
Not yet.
No.
Not yet.
We're all pretty familiar with the way it works at this point.
Yeah, okay. All right. And so there we have, that Warren has kept a tax, single tax rate. They have kept the same factor of 1, and where our tax rate has been. And that's just the history of our tax rate and the levy of commercial. The tax rate will be coming down this year. It's not big, but it's, it's a slight difference, meaning Warren is moving in the right direction with fiscal responsibility. Is there any question? Take a break here, anybody? No? We know it?
No.
Okay. So here it is. The Board of Selectmen may vote to adopt a residential exemption. Again, this residential exemption will not change the total taxable value for the residential properties. This exemption would shift the tax burden between the owner occupied and rental properties. There is only 18 municipalities out of the 351 that has adopted this exemption due to having a high percentage of rental property. The exemption percentage is as low as 5% and up to the maximum of 35%. In FY '24, the following communities adopted this exemption. These are communities like Barnstable, Boston, Brookline, Cambridge, Concord, Everett, Malden, Mashpee, Natautka, Oak Bluff, Providence Towns, Somerville, Watertown. The Warren taxpayer would not benefit from this exemption to the majority of the residential properties being owner occupied. The Board of Selectmen may vote to adopt a small commercial exemption. Exemption to owners of commercial properties valued at less than 1 million and occupied with businesses with less than 10 employees. The maximum amount of the exemption is 10% of the excess value of the qualified property. The adoption would result in a higher tax rate for all commercial, industrial properties, but would not affect the residential, open space, or personal property class of property. This exemption does not benefit the small business owner in the town, but the owner of the real estate. In FY 2024, there were only 14 communities who adopted the small commercial exemption. Those communities included Auburn, Avon, Bellingham, Berlin, Braintree, Chelmsford, Dartmouth, Irving, New Ashford, North Attleburg, Seanuck, Swampscutt, Westford, and Wrentham. Okay, so there is no land classified as open space in the town of Warren. We do not have any. And so in summary, the motions to be read and to vote on by the selectmen and motions recommended by the Board of Assessors is that the Board would move to take no action relative to the adoption of an open space discount for fiscal year 2025. We move to take no action relative to the adoption of a residential exemption for fiscal year 2025. We move to take no action relative to the adoption of a commercial, small commercial exemption for fiscal year 2025. And we move to adopt a residential factor of 1. So that is, that is us. If there's any question.
Do you guys have any questions?
No.
I don't think so.
Standard.
Yep.
Glad to hear that the tax rate's going down a little bit.
Yes, it will.
Residents deserve it.
Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, though.
The public? Anybody on Zoom?
Didn't look like it. Do you want Ms. Bishop to say anything, or?
Nope, she was here just if there was any questions. So you guys will vote, I guess?
I think we have to do the residential factor first, correct?
Yep. Mr. Chairman, if, if you could, just ask if there's anybody that would like to make any comments on the presentation, or if anybody has submitted any written comments.
And the public?
Yes.
Has anybody in the public has any questions about the presentation or any written comments or questions?
We did not receive any.
We didn't receive any, no?
No.
We did not receive anything. Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt the residential factor of 1.
Second?
All in favor.
David Dufrain, aye?
Rich Aihacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye. Motion approved.
And I'll move to take no action relative to adoption of the open space discount for 2025.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufrain, aye?
Rich Aihacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye. Motion approved.
And I make a motion to move to take no action relative to adoption of a residential exemption for fiscal year 2025.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufrain, aye?
Rich Aihacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye. Motion approved.
And I make a motion to move to take no action relative to the adoption of a small commercial exemption for fiscal year 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufrain, aye?
Rich Aihacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye. Motion approved.
I get stuck on your name, too.
I don't even cry. I'll say it in Spanish, how's that?
That's fine.
Okay.
So that closes the public hearing, unless there's anything further, correct?
Yeah. The, the importance of this is, is to see how good are we doing, you know, as a town, financially responsible, it's going in the right direction. And for me, the most important is that everybody out there understands that, you know. So I hope anybody with questions have been here on Zoom, but if they are not here and they are watching or watch this video again, then you know that the assessors have been doing an excellent job, and the town is doing an excellent job.
They're doing an amazing job.
Yeah.
You know, between the assessors, FinCom, Mr. Ferrara, and all the departments working together and making it happen, and no waste, just spending what we need. Everybody's been doing an amazing job and working as a team, and the town is a well-oiled machine. We're banking money. We've never banked money before. We get a, you know, we got a lot of money saved up, and we're dropping the tax rate to make it more affordable for the people that live here, too. And that's amazing. Most towns can't claim that. There's a lot of towns that are very, very bad right now. So we're doing an amazing job, and you guys are doing awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Now we close the hearing? Do we need a motion to close?
Sure. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for the tax classification.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufrain, aye?
Rich Aihacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye. Public hearing closed.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're going to have our police chief, Mosley, report.
Jerry Mallett, Chief Police. For the month of November, the department logged 1,400 calls, investigated two felonies, had 40 incident reports, had five on view arrests, one warrant arrest, and 23 summons for a total of 29 arrests. They had 101 motor vehicle assaults with 30 citations. At the beginning of the month, we had interviews for the sergeant positions. I'd like to thank the town administrator, Jim Ferreira, for working with me on that, Chief Lavoy, Chief Haglen of Westbrookfield, and Lieutenant Whitcomb. We're all sitting on the interview pool. We're dealing with one little thing, and then we're hoping to bring some for you by the end of the month to put forward. On the 7th, the department was notified that we were recipient of a safety grant award from the Spirit of Blue Foundation. The Spirit of Blue's mission is to enhance officer safety through equipment and training needs. This year, we were awarded two ballistic shields. These will be going in the cruisers. The total amount was $5,061 for the two shields. So that would be coming from them. I'd like to thank Officer Williams. He worked hard on that. He found it, applied for it, and we were able to get two shields that'll go into the back of our cruisers.
You guys are going to start doing some training on those shields now?
Oh, yeah.
Those things are very heavy.
Anytime you get anything, you have to train on it. On the 8th, I attended the Veteran Day ceremonies at Quabog and Warren Elementary. Thank you to all the veterans for that, for your service. I would also like to thank history teacher and Army veteran, Joe Salvador, for his, not only for his service to our country, but he puts on a great ceremony every year at Quabog for the veterans. On the 13th, the school safety committee convened for our monthly meeting. On the 15th, the entire department went through stage one of the firearms training and qualification for training year FY '25. Also, on the 15th, the winter parking ban went into effect. Obviously, there's no overnight parking, midnight to 6:00 a.m. On no overnight park, no parking at all during a snow event, I should say. So like today, I'll be on the streets so the town can take care of them, assault them, and foul. On the 26th, Chief Lavoy and I attended a quarterly dispatch meeting in Rutland that was put on by the RECC Director, Moriarty. He went over several items to include a few policy changes that may come forward. After that dispatch meeting, Chief Lavoy and I went to the Seventh Day School, where we spoke with the students on safety. We talked on online safety to them. Since almost every kid now has a phone, and they're on TikTok and all everything else, we start early with that. And finally, on the month, on the 27th, I walked the elementary school with Superintendent Duff, Principal Rich, and Dean of Students, Giehmont. We went to every classroom to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving holiday.
Cool.
And I wore, I wore a wig.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
You have any questions?
No, awesome job.
Thank you.
You know, definitely busy. We're a small town. Get a lot of calls.
They keep themselves busy out there.
Oh, yeah.
Rich?
Good job.
No, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next is the Milltown Public Health Coalition presentation.
It's tabled due to the weather. It's tabled due to the weather. They called and said they couldn't make it here, so they're going to be on next week.
Okay. Next, we have a discussion and possible approval of Leona Rubel hours for the fiscal year 2024 Senior Tax Abatement Work-Off Program. Anticipated vote.
She completed all hours?
Yeah, I have all the hours here. And they added them all up. She did do 50 hours, all for the town clerk.
Do you guys have any questions?
No.
We need to vote?
I'll make a motion to approve the hours for Leona Rubel for the FY '24 Senior Tax Abatement Work-Off Program.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufrain, aye?
Rich Aihacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye. Motion approved.
So next, we have acceptance of a state grant in the amount of $96,000 from the fiscal year 2025 Community One Stop for Growth Rural Development Fund, and to authorize the town administrator to sign in behalf of the town a $10,000 match is required. Anticipated vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. So before you this evening is the official paperwork that finally came in on this grant. I know that we had talked about this a few weeks ago, when we actually got the award letter from the state. The paperwork now has come in on the grant. We've secured the $10,000 match at the special, which was last week, and now it's just a formality of, of accepting the grant and, and signing off and authorizing me to sign on behalf of the town for the grant.
Any questions?
No, I'm good.
No, no questions.
And this is for the Plasky Street Engineering.
Good. Motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the state grant from FY 2025 Community One Stop for Growth Rural Development Fund, and authorize the town administrator to sign.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufrain, aye?
Rich Aihacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye. Motion approved.
Thank you. This $10,000 was expended to get 86.
86.
96.
Yeah, 96. Well, yeah, if you take the 10 grand out, it's 96.
That's a good inversion. Next, we have acceptance of a risk management grant from MEA in the amount of $2,500 to cover the cost of duct and vent cleaning at the senior center, no match required.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. So as we had talked about a few weeks ago, during our acceptance of our Green Communities Grant and going through what is needed for the new heat pumps at the, at the senior center, it was brought to our attention that we should probably get the ducts and vents cleaned at the senior center before we install the new heat pumps. So I got a quote from a company out of Springfield, Duck and Vent Cleaning of America. They're well-established and used in many commercial buildings throughout the region, and they quoted us $2,500 to clean the vents and ducts. I thought that was reasonable, and they would come in on a, on a Friday, clean them all out, and, and get them ready for, you know, so that people can come, you know, in and use the building on Monday. So the, we do have an appointment with them for December 20th that is agreeable with the senior center director, to have less interruptions that day on a Friday. They were able to, to help us work that out. I did apply for a risk management grant through MEA recently, and I've asked them to, to see if we could get this, you know, this expense covered, because it wasn't budgeted for, and we were able to, to get it covered through MEA. So the $2,500, it will be paid directly by MEA.
Very good. Every penny counts.
Awesome.
Okay, this needs to have vote. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the risk management grant from MEA for the duct and vent cleaning at the senior center.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufrain, aye?
Rich Aihacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Very good. Next, discussion and possible vote to enter into a contract with Duck and Vent Cleaning of America, Inc., for the purpose of cleaning and duct and vents at the senior center. Anticipated vote.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, before you this evening is a proposal from Duck and Vent Cleaning of America. They've, they've spelled out their scope of services, what they're going to be doing, their certifications, their insurance. They all meet and exceed the, the standards of what would be required for, for us in town. I ask that the Board consider signing this contract with Duck and Vent Cleaning of America.
Just to follow up on the previous one.
So the grant will pay for this?
Yeah.
Can we make a motion?
I'm good. And I'll make a motion to enter into a contract with Duck and Vent Cleaning of America, Inc.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufrain, aye?
Rich Aihacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye. Motion approved.
Thank you.
I sign this, sir?
Yes, you sign it.
Me?
Yep.
And, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, so this will be, we are on the docket. They have this, this project completed on December 20th.
Our next is discussion and possible approval of the reimbursement of petty cash for the selectman's office. Anticipated vote.
Okay, this, we got down to where I had about $19 in the account, so I figured we needed to get a reimbursement so I can mail out all of the licenses that we're approving. And it's just mostly mail, it's mostly mailing.
This is all administration, yeah?
Yeah.
Yep. Does anyone have any questions? If any? Can we have a motion?
For $80.99?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the reimbursement of petty cash for the selectman's office for $80.99.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufrain, aye?
Rich Aihacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye. Motion approved.
It's time for our town administrator monthly report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Before you this evening, our monthly highlights that I've been doing since the start of fiscal year '25. I've been soliciting all departments to submit monthly highlights to, to bring before the Board. This is our monthly report for the month of November. Just going over, you know, obviously, we had special town meeting last week. We had 29 articles, 27 passed. As you, as you may recall, I attended a manager's fall conference in North Hampton. We had a, a pre-construction kickoff with Energy Conservation, Inc. We've interviewed for the position of sergeant with the police department. I worked with Representative Todd Smola to finalize the paperwork on the town's fiscal year '25 legislative earmark for $50,000 for a new roof at the senior center. We just onboarded Gary Fitzgerald, who was before you this evening, our new hire in the clerk's office, and in the assessors' office as a clerk. I attended the Ware Business Monthly Association meeting to help promote economic development in town. We conducted three interviews, myself and Ralph Sabrowski, to fill a, an open position that we have in the operator mechanic in our sewer plant. We have, we have one individual who we've made a conditional offer to, who has worked at a wastewater treatment plant in the past, who's had a license, and just recently let it lapse. We are, feel very confident that this person can get the license back within a short period of time. I have, I have worked also with the sewer commissioners, brought this to their attention, and they're planning on meeting on December 11th at 10:00 to, to interview and to- and their plan on meeting on December 11th at 10:00 to interview and to talk with this gentleman. But we're really excited that, you know, this is a very strong possibility that will potentially work out for the sewer department, which needs to fill this position. I also worked with MIA this month, our risk management team, to go over a, our risk analysis and risk plan.
I put it in the wrong spot.
Yeah, later in my report, in my weekly report, we'll have talking about some of the risks that we continue to monitor within, within the town insurance department. Financial departments are operating very good. You know, we, the Department of Revenue certified our free cash in November 14th for $1,288,587. As mentioned before, the, in the earlier part of the meeting, we have made significant deposits into stabilization, into capital stabilization, the highest deposits made in the town's history, with $425,000 going into stabilization and $275,000 going into capital stabilizations. So after those deposits go in, approximately, we'll have a little over $2.4 million in stabilization and a little bit more than $800,000 in capital stabilization. Monthly tax collections for the month of November was $345,493.96 with the breakdown there. Our facilities department has been addressing and doing deep cleaning in certain departments, working on cracked, damaged ceiling tiles in the hallways, in offices. Warren Electric just installed a new light in the main corridor in this hallway here. It was dark, so we had them install a new, additional light to brighten it up as a main corridor here in the hallway. It adds more, more light to people that are using the treasurer's office or the tax collector's office. Our fire inspections are continuing to be ongoing. We're doing fire inspections. Adam and the building commissioner are going around doing the building inspections, as well as Encore, which is our outside vendor, dealing with aged fire extinguishers, emergency exit signs that may need some deficiencies looked at, and so on and so forth. They're going to be doing the reports. We're going to be identifying deficiencies and getting them fixed as they move along. The facilities also made sure the gym was properly cleaned for the presidential election. We had quite a bit of voters that day. The gym, we made sure the gym was looking good for the voters. Board of Health has been issuing permits. They're working on two housing complaints. And we have a local person that just requested an application for a new food establishment in West Warren. So we're hopeful that it will come to fruition, that we could potentially get a new food establishment in West Warren. Emergency management has been working, helping us out at the presidential elections at the Shepherd Building. The CERT team was out there. Thank you, CERT. And CERT team has attended a special electrical training by National Grid last month, as well as assisted the town of Southbridge for victims of a large fire that they had in town. They assisted with donations. Conservation Commission's been very busy working on several of their issues of compliance, as well as having public hearings on a driveway and access road, as well as making a determination on a potential public safety complex on 67. So those are the highlights of the departments that had submitted this past month, November. And we have this posted on the website for all the residents to read at their leisure.
Thank you. Something came in my mind, and I want to put it down for commentary.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions, David?
No, good job.
Rich?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. We have to review of American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funds with the discussion of any potential on.
You missed one.
Number nine.
Number 10.
Number nine.
You're on number nine.
Number nine.
Review, discuss, and possible vote to approve the fiscal year 2026 budget calendar and anticipated discussion of the fiscal year 2026 budget guidelines for departments with final guidelines anticipated at the December 12 meeting. Anticipated vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So before you this evening, again, as we, as we try to streamline the budget process and continue to have a smooth flow of what is expected of all departments, as we did last year, and we're going to do again this year, is we're going to put out a budget calendar to let everybody know, you know, what is due and the dates and the times that they're expected to get the information to us, to FinCom, to capital planning, and to the selectmen. So this is our budget calendar. The FinCom has looked at it. They are okay with it. They feel it's a good timeline. We're looking at sending out and establishing guidelines for fiscal year 26. It's hard to believe we're already in fiscal year 26, heading in that way, on December 12th. So I asked the board between now and next week if he can think about, you know, you know, next year and what guidelines that you guys would like to set for the departments. I know in the past that we have said, you know, level services, you know, with, you know, with some minor adjustments. I think that that's, that's still a good model to take. I feel as though that fiscal year 26 and 27 at the state level so far is going to be very questionable. And depending on what we're going to be getting for reimbursements from the state, grants that are out there, you know, there's a lot of unknowns at the moment. So I think that we should err on the side of caution moving forward and continue on the progress that we've made. And so this is the timeline for the budget calendar. Again, our annual town meeting is going to be on June 12th this year. And so that we would, we would have, we would have the annual then, as well as the days in which we would, you know, finalize the warrant and everything is all looked in here, as well as when boards would have to submit all of their budgets and expenditures for review by myself and the FinCom and the selectmen.
I think it looks good.
So maybe over the summer, there were news reports about how the tax revenues were down for the state?
Yeah.
But lately, I haven't heard anything about that. So is it still a problem? Like, has it recovered or changed?
Well, you know, you know, there's, there's, there's been some, you know, we're waiting on the next quarter for the state to come out and what their, what their revenue is. Yes, there was a report over the summer that they were down within what they anticipated. But there's, you know, there's also a change in administration at the federal level, too, that can dictate what is going to happen at the state level. So, you know, depending on how the state, you know, works well with the federal administration or lack thereof, could determine our financial outlook.
Okay.
I would think it's a very good plan to kind of hunker down because the state could be impacted because I agree, the current political climate, the state doesn't appear to want to cooperate with the new president. And that could be some problems with money coming to the state because there's going to be a lot of requirements, such as immigration requirements, that she's made very clear statements about. And unless she complies with that stuff, the state ain't going to get money. And that could trickle down to us, so we're going to have to be prepared for that stuff. We're doing great, but I think we need to make sure that we are very aware that we might not be getting grants in the near future or not as easily.
Good.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, we do our part. We prepare. Whatever happens, it's beyond our capabilities, so we just go forward.
Above our pay grade.
It is. Especially for the board of selectmen.
Yeah.
Anything else for the discussion on the fiscal year?
No, I think it looks good.
Do we need to make a motion?
Just to approve the calendar, and then next week, we could set the guidelines.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the FY 26 budget calendar.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne.
Richa Hacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye, motion approved.
Thank you.
Now, we can review the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funds with a discussion on any potential uncommitted funds. Anticipated vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I just wanted to have a discussion. There's nothing in your packets formally tonight. I sat down with the town accountant this week, and it looks like after we went through all of our expenditures from when we originally received all of our ARPA funds to now, that there's approximately 36, a little over $36,000. $20,000 of the 36 is committed for the dishwasher project at the senior center. So we have a signed commitment on that. We do not have any signed commitments on a little over $16,000 yet. So it looks like that we are going to have, you know, those monies available. If the board wants to take that, you know, into consideration between now and next week and think about some priorities or things that you would like to see get accomplished, please take that time to think about it. That's what we're looking at. And the reason why that we were anticipating having this surplus is because of a couple things. Number one, we had reserved approximately $11,000 for the school street improvement project that we thought we were going to need. We didn't need it, okay? We came under with some change orders and different things. We were able to come under a little bit. We also, there was one early on, one expenditure, there was about $9,000 for the clickers. That was actually taken out of CARES Act money. So what didn't come out of ARPA money, it came out of CARES Act money. So that money wasn't, it wasn't clear. We thought it was under ARPA, is actually under CARES. So that, so after you balance those out, some overages and some, some minor overages on some other things, you have about, about 16.5 that, you know, is uncommitted without any type of, you know, signed either agreement or purchase order. So the board can think about it, you know, let me know what their directive is for next week, and then I can get some signed commitments on whatever that, you know, you're looking to do. You could also just supplement the money into, you know, funds that we, you know, I have already committed for other things and, you know, and have some savings there, or you can commit it to new projects. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention before the deadline, which is December 31st, which we have to have it committed. We don't have to have it spent. We have to have it committed.
What does committed mean?
Assigned agreement with a party.
Okay.
A purchase order of some sort, something where it says that, you know, we've authorized this assigned agreement. So, you know, that's something that you guys can think about, and we can take it up at the next meeting.
So it's not like we can take that and buy, like, extra paper clips? It needs to be something where it's more of like a vendor?
Well, I mean, you know, if you, yeah, I mean, if you said that you wanted to, you know, if you wanted to go purchase something from WB Mason, then I would go to, you know, we would get a commitment from WB Mason for the amount, and we would, you know, get it done and have it, you know, dated before December 31st, and the board would sign off on it.
Okay.
I get an idea right now, something we've been talking about for years. And we pushed it to the side and pushed it to the side, but I think it's probably about that time because, you know, we're trying to look more professional within our meetings here. We got all this nice gear, nice podium. Why don't we finally do the desk? Get that done.
Can we include a computer in it? So it takes the Zoom out of it?
Yeah, we were going to, that computer is going to be part of our, you know, computer plan, too.
Yeah.
That we already have, yeah.
Right now, he has to bring his own computer with the Zoom account and do everything. I want.
We'll have a dedicated computer here.
I would like to see a dedicated computer for this room and Zoom meetings.
Sure.
So anybody can just log on to it?
Yeah.
Old town, and just be hooked up to it.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
I think doing that and probably having the owl or something put up on the ceiling so we don't have to keep on taking it in and out, if that's something we could do. Have it mounted so if we're going to have a dedicated computer and professional desks and a dedicated computer for that, we might as well have that mounted so people don't have to do anything anymore. They don't have to keep on taking it out in the tripod and setting it up and moving it around because every time you move it around.
Yeah, and all these wires.
The risk of damage, you know, the wires or trip hazard.
Well, we already had to replace the wire.
And then pulling in and out, pulling it in and out of the ports. You know, it just makes sense to make it standard now so we don't have to deal with that.
So if you put that upside down, do you think everybody is going to be upside down in the town?
Well, it can be integrated on the desk, you know, right over there, but the idea is not to take it away and put it in and.
Well, I'm sure they, they have some sort of, isn't there a way where you can flip it? So if you do mount it upside down?
I'll find out.
A ceiling-mounted one?
Yeah, like if you have a ceiling mount that it flips.
I, I receive emails from this guy every week, so I can just ask.
Yeah, see if there's a way to mount it on the ceiling so we're not moving it back and forth all the time.
And what about the blinds?
You don't like those?
Well, it was funny, the other day, the kids came with, from the high school with a teacher, and he said he used to come to this school and to this classroom and says, those still.
And they go up.
They still work.
Kind of.
Feel like you're at a big top sometimes, though, with the designs, but.
Well, we don't have much money, but we have a lot of ideas. We also want a split system instead of having that air conditioner there.
Well, these, this, this like desk thing from, you know, is, those are expensive.
Yeah.
So I can, you know, I can get a quote from MasCor.
Yeah. Regardless, where, how we're going to use the money, I think it's a good idea to, you know, to have.
See, we can do it. We're upside down. There you go.
Nice.
Rich figured it out.
Technology.
Yeah. So, yeah, it'd be nice if we could just get them out.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And then mount it in up there.
So let's give disabilities, you know, furniture.
Some technology.
It will be integrated.
Okay.
You know, in the ceiling and all that.
We'll have to get new wires.
Yeah, long enough, yeah. Travis can probably help us with that.
I do think that for summer, we need a better system. I guess, you know, a split system also helps.
Yeah, but with that, we could probably get that within a grant somehow.
We could maybe do a Green Communities next round.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To do what?
Replace that with a mini-split instead of having that. Right now, we're just losing heat over there.
Yeah.
And the noise that it makes for the meetings is terrible.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, I'll get you some ideas next week.
If we come with something else, we can just bring it here.
Yeah. Feel free to email me during the week, too, if you have anything.
Number 10 is review and discuss the proposed adoption of a procurement policy for all departments to follow with. for all departments to follow with, and anticipate a vote at the next meeting on December twelve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So, you know, looking at some of the policies that are currently established in town, we do have some, we're weak on a lot of them, and some we just don't have. We don't really have a formal procurement policy. I think it's critically important that we adopt one. It was recognized by the Department of Revenue in our assessment last year that we should adopt, of one of the policies they recommended was a procurement policy. I took some time to look at what other communities have put together for, in terms of what they've doing for procurement policy. I used some of their language and kind of combined it and made it into one for Warren. And so, before you this evening is pretty standard stuff. You know, this is for the board to look at between now and next week, and hopefully, next week, if everybody's okay with it, we could get it adopted. I did send it to council to have them look at it as well, just to make sure that they're okay with it. I don't anticipating anything major being wrong with it, but it's always good to have council look at your policies, and this is pretty...
One recommendation right off the bat is that page...
Yeah.
It's cut off.
Yeah. This one, page eight, yeah.
Yeah.
We can get that moved up, that may be the printer though, on this one. The, the chart is in the back.
And it, you're only single sided?
Right. I mean, we could do a double.
Yeah, when you do the actual policy, I would definitely do double sided unless...
Yeah, 'cause it's pretty long.
Yeah.
And that's actually, yeah, so that's page seven. It's cut off. Six, seven, and then eight's the next page.
I think on page seven, you could just reference this chart in the back, if that's what the deal is. Are they different?
No, no, they're the same, they're the same. I have, I have the charts within the body of it as well. I just added the other charts, sometimes, instead of looking at the policy, sometimes people just wanna look at the chart itself, so I blew up the chart, we had the chart, this is actually from the state, this chart.
Also do it in color.
In color too, yeah.
Just work on some formatting.
Yeah. Is there a way to identify which ones we already have less convenient, and the ones that we don't have, or...
You don't have any procurement policies that I could find?
This doesn't exist.
None.
None, so this is all new?
Correct. This gives a department a roadmap to what the procedure is and what the policy is, what they should follow.
And this comes from the DOR, Department of Revenue, recommendations?
Yes.
Looks good, I would just work on some of the formatting of the pages. Some of the pages are missing the page number. If you have to shift over, shift over to another page.
Printer was hungry. He was seven. I'm sure he was seven, seven, eight, nine.
Seven, eight, nine?
It's a joke.
Oh, oh.
That's okay, let's move on, it's just formatting.
Do we need to...
Warrants and bills? So, yeah, so next week, we could, you know, have a final vote on that.
Yeah, yeah.
And we can get those formatting things cleared up.
Perfect, very good. Yes, warrants and bills.
Okay, I'll make a motion for the following warrants. PR seventeen for a hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-three cents. PR eighteen, a hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-five cents. AP twenty for a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seven cents. AP twenty A for three hundred and fifty dollars. AP twenty-one for eighty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-six cents. AP twenty-two for four hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-five cents. AP twenty-three for eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars and forty cents.
Saying, just for meaning purposes, can we say what PR and AP means?
PR is payroll, AP is accounts payable. Thank you.
AP twenty should be a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seven cents. You said five twenty-seven.
They said a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seven cents.
Yeah.
Noted. Anything else?
That's it.
Did I say it wrong?
Yeah.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Want me to read them all over again?
No, 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 we just corrected it.
No.
Do, um...
Yes, a second?
A second, yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye, motion approved.
Okay, for the bills, I'll make a motion for the following bills. Turley for a hundred and forty-one dollars and thirteen cents. Copycat Print Shop for a hundred and thirty-five dollars. Tekton for one thousand, thirty-three dollars and seventy-two cents. Weston and Sampson for one thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and forty cents. Entree for two thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-one cents. KP Law for six thousand, twenty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Modern Pest for a hundred and eight dollars. National Grid for a total amount of nine hundred and nine dollars and fifty-nine cents. Comcast for two hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-nine cents. Master Telecom for ninety-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. W.B. Mason for twenty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. Amazon for thirteen dollars and twenty cents. McKesson Medical Surgical for ninety-five dollars and fifty-one cents. Marlin Leasing Corp. for one thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and twenty-three cents. Warren Electrical for four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-six cents. American Tower for a total amount of four thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars. SBA Structures LLC for one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-five cents. Hampton Communications for fifteen hundred dollars. Pine Ridge Technology for one thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars. And Meyer for ten thousand dollars.
Right. Any questions?
So, what is the medical surgical thing?
It is the pads for the AED machines.
Oh, the replacements?
Yes.
And then...
They're outdated.
Meyer is our deductible?
Yeah.
It's the deductible that was approved at the special.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have, do I have a second?
Second.
In favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye, motion approved. Minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for November seventh, November fourteenth, and November twenty-first.
Any questions?
Nope.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye, meeting approved.
Town Administrator Report, we already did that.
This is my weekly report.
You're gonna speak more?
Oh, one of the things...
I can make it quick.
One of the things that he wanted in his weekly report, I misunderstood, and I put it in number five, so...
In number five?
Yeah, you're the Meyer thing.
I'll make it quick. So, I just wanted to go over with the board, the Meyer Risk Management Analysis. The Risk Management Analysis is, every three years, the town is, 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 is looked, has a three-year lookback period for risk and for claims that the town had to pay out. So, there is a corrective action plan based on a percentage of the claims that we have had over the last three years, okay? And so, Meyer is requiring us, within this corrective action plan, to address some additional training that they're seeking for various departments to help mitigate some risk. So, you should have the corrective action plan in your packet.
It's in number five.
Number five, okay.
I think that's Meyer.
Yeah, it's in number five, so... So, we're at a three-year loss ratio of about seventy-seven percent, and anything over seventy percent within our loss ratio, Meyer automatically puts us into a three-year risk pool that needs to have some corrective actions taken. And so, for our property and casualty loss ratio, we're at seventy-seven point twenty-two percent, and that's basically any auto accidents that the town has had. We have to, you know, that Meyer had to pay out on. They're requiring us to have a corrective action plan taken that individuals that are driving for the town, use town vehicles, that they go to additional driver training. They're looking at the police, fire, and DPW departments specifically. I've already met with police and fire, I'm meeting with Jeremy next week, and we're going to be getting in some, either an EVOC, another EVOC training, where they come out and they do some simulator type of training, or some online training for all of these departments. That is what they're requiring, they would like to see us get this scheduled soon, and to get this addressed. I'll be working with police, fire, and DPW on that.
Can't we just send them all to EVOC, the actual, with state police, at Devon's?
I don't know if they do that.
Yeah, they do.
Meyer does do some rough things, you have to send a car, you know how it is on vehicles.
Yeah, it's pretty rough on vehicles, but you could use a state trooper's vehicles too.
In the academy you do, but on this, they won't, you have to fly a vehicle.
If you ask nicely, thank you. I beat the hell out of their crews many times.
So, we're gonna be working on getting that done, one way or the other. The, on professional liability, our loss ratio is about sixty-eight percent, a little bit below the average, but still enough that they wanted us to look at some corrective action plan. And so, they're asking us to do some additional training on discrimination and harassment. I would like to see this done for all employees, not just police where they're recommending, but I would like to see if we can get this done throughout all our town employees. So, you know, they, we did have Gina Ryan come in to town for our police about a year ago, and she gave a training for the police. I'm gonna try to see if we can get her to come in to do the entire town in a couple days. If we get Gina Ryan, it doesn't cost us anything through Meyer. She's a contraction service provider, that as long as we're a client of Meyer, we can get her. It's just getting her is tough, and if we can't get her, then we will have to use some of our training dollars to get somebody here to do the training.
Couldn't we do an annual requirement for like sexual harassment? Because I know with the government, we do SHARP training. We have to do online training and in person, and we test it all through the online and everything, things that we can't do and say and all that stuff, and how to report it properly. I don't know if there's something like that for municipal employees, where they can do an online training, where it's documented, they get a certificate that they did it, and, you know, it only takes about an hour, half an hour, hour, and you have to go through the slides. And you go through all the slides, and you take little tests, knowledge-based tests, that you're actually learning it, and you're not just clicking through. You literally can't click through, you have to do the knowledge tests and stuff, and pass them.
I can look into that.
Yeah, also, who has control of, for example, the conflict of interest that all the, you know...
That's the state ethics division.
That's through the town clerk. She monitors it.
Okay, 'cause that was a nice thing to do.
Yeah, they have the web, you have to do a webinar through the state, and then she keeps track of the people when...
Actually, now the state keeps track of it. And when you email it, when you do it, you have an email address, they keep track of it, and they email it back and say, you need to do it.
Yep.
Okay, 'cause I haven't heard of anything.
I've taken many times, but... They get it due every three years?
It's two years now.
I must be doing.
We'll probably all do.
Yeah.
We knock the door over there and see how we're doing on that?
Yeah, you would have to, you would have to log in with whatever email address you provided, and they would give you login credentials to get into that account.
Doesn't, yeah, doesn't she keep track of it?
Not anymore, the state does.
'Cause I haven't heard of anything.
So, yeah, check with Lori, but from what I understand, the state just does it directly with the people now.
'Cause I know we had to give her a copy of our certificate.
Yeah.
Not anymore.
Being, after being appointed again.
Can we look into that?
Sure.
Sure. I just would like everybody who's getting bored and everybody who's been more than two years, you know, make sure that you go at least through those simple trainings, I think it's important.
Well, I mean, that, again, I believe for all the new hires, the town clerk issues a packet and says, this is the requirement, and this is where you gotta go, the website, and it's self-directed. And the state, like Karen had said, will send you the certificate once you've completed through your email address. It's all based now on your individual email addresses, so it's not like we can go in and say, well, did Derek do it or not do it?
Let's say I changed email. Then what happens, it's like, they may send an email to my...
Well, if Lori's not monitoring it no more, then how do we know that they're even doing it?
Well, it's up to the individual to know that every two years, you have, it's a requirement under law, you do it.
But isn't that putting us to a risk? Because they're, we're not making sure they're doing it?
I think it's on the individual.
I'm sure I haven't done in the last two years, and I haven't received any email, and I haven't changed my email. Maybe it went to spam.
I know, I know recently that when I initially started here, you know...
You get the package.
I did it, and then, and then I also had done it that same year with the state, when I was working with the state. And then the next year, they changed the system, and so I had to do it again, but this was all, you know, self-directed now.
Well, let's check it.
Yeah, I really don't like the fact that we're not like monitoring that our employees are actually gonna do it. Because you can give them a packet, but if you don't get them something back saying that they did it...
I think Lori...
We don't, we don't know.
I believe Lori gets a list of those that need to do it, but she doesn't... The state is the one that keeps track of it, but I think she'll get it.
Well, even if she has a list of who needs to do it, we should know who needs to do it.
Yeah, that's good, the list is good.
I'll find out from her.
Awesome, thank you.
So, yeah, so discrimination and harassment preventative training is important. So, yeah, so discrimination and harassment preventative training is, is important, and they're, they're looking for us to, to, to do something with that. They also look at workman's comp. So in the last three years, our, our loss ratio is at a hundred and twenty-five percent, again, higher than, than what they would like us to be at. So they're looking for us to do an accident, incident, and near-miss investigation program for the town, for all departments. OSHA, developing some standards with OSHA in preventing, you know, accidents to occur, some job hazard analysis. And so we'll be working with the state, I mean, we'll be working with Maya to, to get some of these trainings to all our departments on, on some of this stuff. And one of the things that we're, we're also doing is at our department head meetings, we've also formed a, a safety committee within the department head meeting. And the safety committee meeting is with our risk manager, Maya. And so she is gonna be coming to all of our department head meetings. We're having one in, in, in July, January seventh is our next one. And she will be there at nine. And so she will talk about, you know, some of these issues that, that she would like to see us get addressed. And, and just by having her at the meeting and giving her an opportunity to talk to our employees, our department heads, this helps us. So we are working on it, but as any insurance company out there, you know, when there's claims, they wanna see some type of, 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 of training or, or corrective action to, to mitigate any future risk. Also, in, in, in this week, we, I'd met with Entree. And Entree had put out their monthly report for November, and it is in your packets. I did send out emails to individuals that didn't participate in last month's training or hasn't participated at all in any of the trainings. Those are serious trainings that need to be taken for our cybersecurity as well as our cybersecurity insurance policy. So if individuals do not take these courses and they have a town email account, and, you know, if, you know, if, if we happen to get attacked and we happen to have to file a claim, they are going to pull our, our, our reports to see who has taken these trainings or who hasn't. And if your ratio is out of whack, then they're, they, they have a strong chance of denying the claim. So I've, I've stayed on top of departments, I've asked them to, to participate, I've sent them emails, I've reminded them, but those are, these are some, some of the challenges that we will have to continue to address moving forward. Also, within the report for the hardware lifecycle report from Entree, this is not in color, but the color one will have ones that are in, in, in red, which there's about, yeah, which there's about twenty-one of them, of desktops, that, that, those are the ones that we're gonna try to look at, trying to get replaced, as well as some laptops, some older laptops that we have, in looking at some of the old updated software as well. So Entree puts out this report every month. We are waiting on our, our, our computer program, our computer grant that I submitted. There's been some dialogue back and forth. They've asked for some additional information as part of our grant dismissal. I'm, I'm hopeful that they're gonna be coming out with a decision relatively soon. And then we can move forward with, you know, with the purchasing of these things. I just, I just would, would, would feel terrible if we used town money and if we had waited a month and we got grant money for it. So it, it's just something that, I know people are itching to get new computers, I wanna get them new computers, but it makes no sense to do it right now until I find out what's going on with this grant.
Good. That's my weekly report.
You went longer, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I will almost no comments, I'll, I'll hold my comment for the comments. It's not related to you, it's related to cybersecurity. All right, new business. Old business.
Everything for the senior centers still on track?
Yeah.
January, first week of January, second week of January?
In January, yep.
Karen, what is that invitation that we have for Saturday?
Oh, that's at the seniors, no, the housing.
Housing Authority?
Housing Authority up at Winthrop Terrace, two o'clock. She's, she heard back from Rich, he said you were not going.
Yeah.
But she says even if you could just stop in and have some appetizers sometime during the time.
What's the address, or where is it?
It's at Winthrop Terrace.
Is that a restaurant or?
No, that's a.
Housing Authority.
The Housing Authority.
At their open space, at their common space? At two o'clock?
Two o'clock.
Or three o'clock?
Two.
At two?
Starts at two.
Starts at two? I'll try to stop by and get some.
She had a ban and everything else, she, she says it's just a layout spread, it's not sit-down. So just come and grab it and.
Yeah, she said I'd stop by.
Yeah, she said she heard from you.
Any other old business? Then we have correspondence, Xfinity increasing their rates and it's not available for new subscriptions? What is that?
Fourteen?
The letter they sent to us, price changes.
I don't see anything about subscriptions though.
It's just all, all the packages, they're increasing their rates on their packages, so.
And some of them won't be available anywhere anymore.
Do you have Xfinity, look for a price increase?
X.
Yeah, quite a large price increase.
Didn't really, it's not saying what they are though, is it?
It's written on.
Yeah, there's a list, huh? Depending on the package you have.
Right.
What is this for?
Xfinity is Comcast.
So it's internet?
Internet, cable, phone.
And we can't, well, okay, we have phone and internet. We don't watch cable, do we?
No, we don't have cable here.
Okay.
But it's for everybody that's in war and Comcast is pretty much the only service you've got.
I guess we're just at mercy of whatever it is, we have to.
Pretty much.
Swallow it.
Yep.
It's their service, it's their business.
Yep.
Have you heard from, you remember that group from Verizon? They came us here to get a grant so they could start working on something?
Fios, yeah.
They got the grant and what?
They're working on it. That's probably a, a three-year project.
So we still have hope?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, no, they, they got the, they got the initial grant, so they're gonna be doing it.
They're gonna raise their prices in the meantime to get as high as they can before the competition comes in.
Yeah.
Well, that's another thing that we, we just have to be prepared.
Always DirecTV too.
Yeah.
Or no TV.
Or no TV, yeah.
Indirect TV. Any?
And we haven't heard from, oh, Westfield.
For the power?
No, yeah, but the fiber optic network.
Internet, that thing?
Yeah. What was that called?
Web City?
Web City, yeah, yeah, okay. We haven't heard from them.
No, I mean, you know, it's, I haven't heard, I haven't heard from them. I, I've seen some communities recently have been getting online, larger communities than us.
It's a big expense.
It's a big expense.
Yeah.
And then you gotta get the, the residents to buy into it and join.
Yeah.
Because if not, it's not worth it for you. And then you're taking on a new utility to the town that we have to oversee.
Yeah, but it would.
It's a good idea, but it's.
Potentially better than this.
Is Warren ready for it yet?
Well, I think it'd be a good idea if you were kind of more of a tight community versus spread out like we are. I think it's gonna cost us so much to run the wires that.
Yeah.
And hopefully with Verizon, you know, getting this Fios and getting the grant, they can expand the high-speed internet and offer another solution to the residents of the, of the town.
Yeah, that's, that's what I mean.
As opposed to Comcast.
There's a lot of good internet apps out there to watch a lot of the TV that we're watching and just choose what you wanna watch and not pay for all these extras.
Yeah, I don't know why, why you'd get cable TV at this point. Everything's available on.
Because not all of us have internet.
Well, yeah.
Or cable. So we have a satellite on our house.
Yeah.
You city slickers.
But you, you get internet through that, right?
Huh?
You get internet through that.
No.
You don't?
Not through DirecTV, no.
No, I have to get DirecTV because the, it's the only provider that I can get a specific Spanish channel that my wife and my kids watch. There's no other way to get it. I have to have both.
I'm looking at Starlink though. Because they actually sell the Starlink equipment at Walmart now. You can buy the whole package, all the equipment, everything for like three hundred and fifty bucks. Throw it on, throw it on your house or throw it in your, you know, your yard and just sign up for a package and you pay as you go. There's no contracts. So if you don't want it no more, I'm done.
Moving forward, there's another correspondence from the Warren Water District that residents are responsible for replacing lead pipes on the private side portion of the service lines. So this means that the main pipe goes on the road and then gets diverted into your property, once it goes into your property, into your house. That's the part that we, they, the house is responsible.
From the road to your house and in your house.
Now, is this a mandatory thing?
Yes.
It is?
That's what it says.
All these residents are gonna have to pay to do that?
Yeah, they have financing available, but it says it's mandatory. Somewhere I read that.
There's a, there's a mass.gov link over there. I mean, I know the, the old houses, the, I've seen old houses where they have no pressure inside the house and because the pipe from the road to their house, it's in such a bad condition.
I don't know, I thought I read it.
Because that'd be very hard to have somebody on a fixed income do a, a, do a line tie-in, which is probably gonna cost them, what, eight grand?
Do they have like a price by foot? You know, if, if, if you have a, you know, a hundred dollars a foot? So at least you know how much are we talking about or we're?
No, this is just what they sent out to everybody.
And who does the work?
Whoever you hire, I guess.
You can have a local contractor do it, if they know how to do it, that's what we did. I think it cost us like four grand to do it. But it was only.
How long ago?
Ten years ago.
Yeah.
Eight grand.
Probably, and it was only.
Your house is about thirty feet from the road, right?
Yeah, I was trying to think of the, it's a hundred and eighty-foot driveway. It was probably about a third of that was, you know, what.
Fifty feet?
Fifty feet. Plus it turned a corner and went into the house, you know, so. Yeah, so it's.
I think it depends on how much they have to dig, what they have to dig through.
Yeah, that's, they had, in the best case, they pull the pipe, they attach the new one to the old one and they just yank it through the ground. Ours was rusty and it had all these rocks rusted to it, so they just had to dig up the driveway. Yeah, it was, Travis just texted. Lead pipe replacement is a federal requirement that was recently put in place. In ten years, all lead piping is to be replaced everywhere.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
So they have ten years to do it?
Yeah.
Yeah, but how do you hold a, a resident accountable for that? If they don't wanna do it, they don't wanna do it.
Or they can't do it.
Or they can't afford to do it.
I don't know.
What do you, what do you, cut their water off until they fix it?
Well, they tell you all the health, health problems you're going to have if you don't do it.
I think when you're talking to a person that's in their seventies or eighties.
They don't care.
They really don't care.
Yeah, exposure to lead before and during pregnancy has an increased risk, I don't care.
I'm good.
Well, what it'll probably come down to is before you sell your home.
Yes.
You have to do this, right? You gotta get your.
Chapter five.
All your different things.
If you have septic, you have to look at it.
Yeah, so you'd have to have this certified then.
That's my guess.
Okay, any other correspondence?
No.
Comments and concerns?
The tree lighting is tomorrow?
Tree lighting is tomorrow.
Oh, right, yeah.
It's gonna be cold.
There is snow out there.
Yeah.
So we got the perfect environment for it, it's gonna be beautiful.
Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus are in the post office.
They will be in the post office?
Why are they in the post office?
So it's warmer?
Because they didn't wanna stand out there in seventeen-degree weather.
He's from the North Pole!
I can't help that. I'm just telling you, Mrs. Claus just came and saw me, asked me how I felt when I was an elf.
Awesome, what, that, what time that starts?
Five.
I don't know.
It's five, it's five, five to eight?
Five.
Yeah.
I know my, my kids are gonna sing over there, so.
Oh, really?
Five to eight.
Yeah, from the chorus and from the choir. And I, I know my daughter, her dance studio is also gonna be there, so.
Yeah, Diva Dance Studio is moving out of town too, right?
I don't know.
Yeah, they just announced. Another one right here.
The one right here in.
Center town?
The Center Town.
They're moving to Brookfield? They just announced that they're gonna be moving to Brookfield, so.
Well, that's too bad, they were getting good at it.
What's that, to lose businesses? But, um, everybody comes to the tree lighting tomorrow, I'll be there.
I'll be there too.
I should be there, I think.
You'll be there.
Yeah.
You're gonna be there.
I'll be there.
You bringing the misses?
She's got a cold.
Oh, that's not good.
Well, she's, hangs out in the cold with a cold.
You get colder, yeah.
Tell her, tell her the fresh air will do her good.
Yeah.
I was gonna mention, I think I mentioned it to you once, Mr. Ferreira, that when you, when I tried to pay my sewer bill through the website, it did not work.
Okay.
And can we double-check?
Let me look into the.
The link was broken.
To Unipay?
Yeah, to pay for sewer, it just, it says something is not working right, please contact whatever. Did you remember that message?
I remember him.
Now, the next thing I wanted to talk about is I've, before the, the special town meeting and all that, I read many times that where are things located on our website, on town's website? They can't find it, you know? Where are the articles, you know, things like these or like the information you just posted? I know our website. I know our website is not very friendly user and it's not there. Should we have a temporary landing page with, where employees can put stuff easier and then people can, you know, just a shortcut?
All they have to do is click view all. Cause there's only, that box is so small that you put more than four things on it.
I get it, I get it. I've been, I've done that, but it's still-
But it only goes in the news, the news feed. But doesn't the town clerk put it on her page after the end?
You know, if, if, if we put a fifty things, you will have to go through fifty things to go look for something. Instead of having, can we give it a little thought about it?
My hope is, is that once we get a new website, okay? We will have, build confidence in departments and have them trained, ask them how to operate their pages, not being so cumbersome in, in trying to post things on there. Easy to post, easy to upload and, and, and put on there. So, uh, you know, I think instead of, you know, trying to do competing websites at this time, let's just, let's take the time-
Instead of competing website, landing page is just a, and-
It's a link like what they have in the parts.
Instead of, instead of having, so you will see like, you will go to our pa, to our page and say news, you click news and then you get these different buttons of, you know, each board and you click on it and you see all the, of each one of it. A way, an organized way to do it, perf, you know, it will be a temporary one.
Within the website?
Yes.
We can look and see if we can create another, you know, link or something or, or another dropdown.
Parks has it.
Parks has a link from their thing over to where they have all their information.
Yeah, something like that.
You mean a link or a dropdown?
It's a, it's a link.
To another, to another website?
To another page, right?
It's a land, call it landing page. I mean, let's just think about it. I, between now and then we get the new website, I, I just wanna provide the public with all the information that we generate and have it available.
Right, and uh, everything for the special was on the website.
It, it, I know.
All the articles, everything was right there.
People, you know-
I think the town clerk actually puts all the stuff in.
Yeah, I do.
Okay, wait, do you put it just in the news?
What is that, right?
She puts it on her page.
Right.
You're right. I put it all on the news and anywhere else it needs to be.
Right, but I think she puts it in her page so you can actually find it. Like all, any of the articles that are there. So. I think you just have to know which department to go to, to look for it. In that, you, you're right about the news. Every time you put something in news, it just gets bogged down more and more and more and it just gets pushed down the list. Unless you put a priority and it keeps it at the top.
Except when you have five priority, that's the only thing that's there, so anything new is on the second page.
Yeah.
So what Parks did is they created this link and then they mapped it to this, which is forms dot office dot com. And then it's just got a bunch of stuff in it.
And I don't know if that's updated, cause they've gone-
Well, it had the voting on it and it had, yeah, it's updated.
Good.
Um, so, I mean, potentially, you could put something-
Were you able to help Danielle Fautman?
She, when she went to the page, you know how it says edit up there?
Yeah.
Hers doesn't. So it's something about she does not have permission to even edit her page. And I, I was fiberglassed at that. I told her to send you an email, tell you what she has.
Okay.
So you could have one link on this news site that went to another page?
Yeah, a landing page with, you know, an organized way to put all the information, you know.
But then you've gotta have people post to that site as opposed to this one. So I don't know if that's-
Maybe we just have one person in charge.
Oh, I just logged on as an administrator for the town website and it's asking me to rate our satisfi- satisfaction with their website.
That's cause I told the guy I hated it.
Please rate your satisfaction with this product.
One star.
Minus five.
Not at all satisfied.
Well, something that we wanna, you know, consider for in, putting the information out there. I know we do Facebook, we do Town Alert, we do all that, but still, it, it, it is send somebody to a website and they get all confused trying to find something.
You know, and, and hopefully with the new website, you know, this will be your one-stop shop to get all of that information, to get all of the, of, of the documents that you're looking for, to, to get links to other, you know, to our Facebook page, to our, our Town Alert page, you know, to get everything there. We wanna build traffic to this website um as a way to, you know, communicate with people and engage them.
The page to go to when you're looking for something. Right now, if you're looking for the uh, uh tomorrow's uh activity, you may go to Facebook and then search for Parks and then you find it. Instead of, yeah.
Yeah.
Have this be, be the best source of information. And last, but you know, I, I just wanna share with all of you guys something that happened to me recently and it's about cybersecurity. You know, I'm a guy that likes computers and all that and probably Chief will keep his ears up. Um, there's a new scam, a new way to scam and it's really, really good. I mean, good for them, good, bad for the consumer. Um, one day, my daughter said, Daddy, can I get this for Christmas? I open it up, it was a link, okay, do it, pay. It doesn't work, didn't take the card, doesn't do anything. Okay, that's fine, I'll try later. Then I get a voicemail, not even a call, it just goes directly into your voicemail. Let's see if we can-
Hello, good afternoon, this message is for Nancy Phillips. This is Marcia from Bank of America to Jean-Pierre.
Bank of America, is it right there, right? So there, it looked saying that there was a suspicious activity from my Bank of America card. Okay, I called the number. Well, before I called the number, I Googled it and I found it was suspicious. But I decided to call anyway, so when I call, it says, um, okay, so to verify it's you, Bank of America's gonna send you a notification through your Bank of America app. Okay, I said, and suddenly, I get the notification from Bank of America, boom, and it shows there. I didn't read the whole thing, but it says, you will be logged out of your, the app after receiving this, which is, doesn't make any sense, but that was, was triggering. But even though, oh, yeah, it's a notification from Bank of America. Then a guy picks up the phone and says, hi, how are you? How can I help you? I don't know, I'm returning your phone call. And he says, well, um, what happened to your card? Well, I don't know, it was compromised. Okay, um, do you have your account number? No. Well, you have your email? Okay, I, I'm good in giving the email, it's okay. But then, okay, so what's your phone number? Are you in, in my account yet? Yeah, I am here. Okay. Then he started asking for more personal questions that raised the flag and everything, I hung up. But the thing is, imagine anybody who's gets a message from your bank saying that your car was compromised, you call and it says you're gonna get a notification from your app. Looks legit, it is very legit, but it's not. Then when I hang up, I call the number behind my card, I got Bank of America, and I told him, oh yeah, we will never do that. You know, do that kind of transition of sending you. Then I tried to look more into the, what happened to the app. It's not the app, they send you a notification, but it's really a website and that's why they tell you, you will be logged off your app after reading, getting this notification because they put a screenshot. At the end, they sent me an email to about canceling my, my card. And I click on both links, I click from the Bank of America and I click from this guy's link and you see the both pages next to it, they look exactly the same. Even says bankofamerica dot com and then it has a different termination, Bank of America is just bankofamerica dot com. There was something else on top and that was it. That was, it says login now with your information. If you log in there, your money's gone. So they're getting very good at it. They're getting very good at, you know, cyber attacks and, you know, you, you heard, I don't know if you guys heard the, the voicemail saying, here's from Bank of America. Oh, what happened? I would just call. It's not, you, you have to be very careful.
Thanks.
You guys have any other?
Uh, the Parks and Rec, they, they were using the one that said Parks and Rec to log in?
They, I changed the name on it.
What's it called now?
No, that's what it's called now. Before, it used to be Jay Sweeney or something Sweeney.
So it's now it's Parks and Rec?
Yep.
Because they weren't added to their page.
Okay.
So I just added them to their page as an admin, so they're good now. They should be able to go in there and-
I'll let Danielle know that.
Fix it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Concerns?
No.
No. Rich? Public has any comments or concerns? Oh, Karen?
My comment and concern is that when we sent out a notification about the special town meeting, I got probably eight people called me, at least eight, and said, why do I have to have eight different notifications that we're going to have a special town meeting? Why can't I just have one? And I said, because I think it was on the reverse nine-one-one. Is that how you did it?
Yes.
I think, and I said to the person, I said, well, how many phone numbers do you have on the reverse nine-one-one? And she says, well, I have three. I said, well, each one of them is going to get a notification. And she says, well, why? Why can't you just do one? I said, you registered them, I didn't.
So if they register to the nine-one-one, they have to, in order to get off of that, they'd have to de-register themselves. So, um, everyone you register will get a, a reverse nine-one-one call.
Right, but that's a good thing, they're getting a notification. It's okay.
That's what I try to convince, that's what I try to convince these people, but they says, I got one at eight o'clock at night, one at six o'clock in the morning, one at, all these different times, stop doing it.
We, we are doing our work, we're trying to do the best to communicate, you know? We're not gonna make everyone happy.
What you tell them is, well, did you show up for the town meeting? No? Well, you're just gonna keep on getting them till you show up to the meetings.
All throughout the year.
We want you to know, we need you to be at the meetings.
What, were there sixty people there?
No, there was, it would've won at one point voting.
I think it was about sixty at one point.
But they all weren't voting.
Twenty percent that were town employees?
Yeah.
Yeah, because they, they, like, throughout the night, there was like, only like forty-one votes at some points and I'm like-
And that's including all of us?
Forty-one people are deciding everything that was on this town.
Well, and there was a person who's, who's stood up and said-
And nine of them are gonna vote against everything.
Well, yeah, but there was a person who stood up and said, you know, why are taxes going up and all this stuff and it's like, well, if you don't come to the meeting, then you don't have a say in how the money's spent. And if you don't like the articles, then come and vote no.
The thing that I thought was funny is when the one person stood up and says, we need more people to, to join the committees. And the people that he was sitting with than him are not on any of the committees.
Well, none of them joined any of the committees.
Well, I agree that, you know, it's towns, taxes, money, but they already paid for it. We're just trying to make the best use of it. If they don't like it, why don't you, are here when you're deciding what to do with the money?
Yeah, these meetings is also a place-
Don't go to a town meeting if you wanna find out what's going on. Come before it happens.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Decisions making, you know? Joe, you're next.
Joe Contract, resident. Well, Saturday is December seventh. Eighty-three years ago Pearl Harbor was bombed. And I'm pretty sure that there are very few veterans still alive from that war. However, usually on TV, they put out something from Pearl Harbor, uh, like a dedication ceremony. As I recall, with the Pearl Harbor Memorial, Elvis Presley did more than a movie out there, he did uh, a concert to pay for that memorial. It's just something that we should remember. As another thing of note, I am very grateful to Town Highway for painting the yellow lines up the wear road. Now, if we can only teach people how to keep to the right. You do not put the center of your hood on the center of the yellow lines. The roadway is between twelve and fifteen feet wide, stay on your own side. Thank you.
Yeah, definitely, you can't keep yourself within the lines, you're not up to driving on our roads.
Is that what those lines are for?
Deer are in the rut right now, so you don't wanna hit a deer, so you stay in the middle.
That way you can swerve safely to either side.
You know the deer's coming, you get you more time response.
Exactly.
The problem is, is deers don't go the right direction, moose go forward, deers go backwards and forwards or right and left, they don't.
Well, at least the hope is that my camera can see where the other car is coming, you know, if it's on this side or the other side.
And if you hit it, you can get in the trunk of your car quick enough. Throw the beddy a truck, take it home.
I don't know.
You kill it, you keep it.
Drive safe. Be careful, respect. And if you're late, get up earlier. Anything else? You looking at me?
Late?
But I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't speeding and putting anybody in danger.
No, you, no, you weren't. But how about get up earlier?
He did.
But that's not gonna help him at six o'clock. PM, six PM. The day's already been messed up.
I go to, I go to bed very early, two or three o'clock in the morning.
So I make a motion to adjourn.
No, we need to, next meeting.
Oh yeah, next meeting.
So next meeting will be the twelfth at six PM?
I won't be here.
You won't be here?
Will not, right.
Okay.
You have to make all these big decisions about me. Cause I have a commitment.
This is your commitment.
I know it is, but occasionally.
Yeah, for the nineteenth, it will be my turn because on the nineteenth, I, I can be here earlier or stay on the first forty minutes of the meeting, but then, uh, my kids are singing at the high school, so I'm gonna have to drive over there. So it's-
Yeah, they, we have two public hearings on the nineteenth. We have the tree hearing for National Grid. And then we also have the-
CDVG.
CBG.
Which tree here?
Well, that's just a, wait, is that seat, is that the?
The senior center improvements.
Oh.
For the bulkhead and the side door.
But then before that, don't we have the um-
Yes, at five o'clock.
Five is the town, town common kickoff.
Kickoff meeting, that was the word I was looking for.
It can be at five, but then around six-thirty-ish, I'm gonna have to leave.
Well, we should get through the two public hearings. What's the tree hearing for?
National Grid came in and said that they had to do a tree hearing because they went to Jeremy and they already had two people um, object and he is supposed to be sending me all the information and I have not received it yet. So I will reach out to him tomorrow.
Do we know where?
I can't remember. I'm old.
Okay.
Easy enough.
So now, I do have a question that you guys need to talk about is the twenty-fourth of December. I sent an email out, I got-
We're not gonna be here.
That's the question, half-day, full-day?
For the employees? For the employees?
Mm-hmm.
I said go for Christmas.
Right? Work on Christmas?
No.
Wait, Scrooge?
No, no, the the opposite.
No, they're talking about the day before Christmas.
Twenty-fourth.
Christmas Eve.
So the proposal is half day or full day? Full day working or full day out?
Out.
For I?
I'm full day out.
I'm full day out.
All right, I have to disagree.
You are Scrooge.
The, the police don't get a full day off.
They never get a day, they don't get Christmas off either.
Didn't get a full day off before Thanksgiving, I don't know, I don't think it's fair. If everybody in this building gets off and nobody else does, I think it just, it can create tension. Cause now somebody on highway's like, oh, Shepherd's Building is closed.
But they're also working a different schedule. They work shift work.
I know, but still.
They're shift workers, they're not.
Yeah, I mean, they're, you already got Friday off.
Yeah.
Every Friday off.
I don't.
Okay, so.
And we've already talked about bringing him back for Fridays.
Well, but until we do that.
We've been working on it.
That's ever gonna happen.
Jim's here.
That's a hard thing, yeah.
A few. I don't know why it'd be a mutiny, it's called a job.
If you try to get everybody to go back to Fridays?
Well, it's just like all these people that are teleworking, you don't show up, you get replaced. Simple as that. You know?
I would recommend we put this on an agenda because it's not officially on our agenda, so we really shouldn't be taking a vote or talking about it.
We're not voting.
Okay, all right.
Nobody's voting on it. But what about the half day, full day? That's what you mean?
Yeah, it should be placed on an agenda.
So can we?
Put it on the agenda for the twelfth.
Yes. Wait, Scrooge isn't gonna be here?
Perfect.
I I've, I've voiced my concerns. I don't think it's a good idea. That's my concern.
Means you're not here either.
I gotta, I gotta work, I gotta, things I gotta do.
Spend time with your family too.
You got a lot of projects here.
Okay.
Okay, so wait, if you take the twenty-fourth off, you have the twenty-fifth off, then what is Thursday? Come back to work?
Yep, full day.
And then Friday?
Full day.
Well, for you.
For me, and Jim. Well, maybe not Jim.
Jim works every day anyway.
Depends, and if I take it vacation day or not, I don't know. You should, but I will, you know, if I don't, then I would be here.
So are we giving sewer the day off then? And the senior center?
The senior center works on their own schedule anyways.
Okay.
No, they would be part of this.
Yeah.
I think you should include as many employees as you can on that, if you're gonna vote on it next week.
Yeah, just put everyone.
So, can you do highway if you can then? Right?
As long as it doesn't snow.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's on the agenda for next week.
Yeah.
It's townwide.
Okay.
Except for the police, because we need them.
And fire.
And fire.
Rain, rain check?
We'll get you next time.
The fire department, they can stay home and still be on call.
Christmas Eve is busy.
Okay, it's on the next agenda.
Now you may.
I make a motion to adjourn.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David do for an I.
For Chi hacker I.
Daddy Billy's eye, eight o'clock.